All right, this is the Village of Round Lake Beach Council Meeting Minutes, uh, meeting tonight for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. Uh, clerk, can we call the ro- a order at seven o'clock? And, uh, the roll call, please.
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Valades? Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. All right, if you would, make sure your microphones are all on, too. All right. Um, if we can, let's stand for pledge allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. All right, um, need to get an approval of the agenda tonight as it stands. Um, I know we've all taken a look at it. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
So moved by trustee, uh, Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. All right, approval of the special meeting minutes from August thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have that as well. Um, now approval of the meeting minutes for September twentieth of twenty twenty-one. Uh, can I have a motion, please? Motion by trustee Abara?
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have that as well. All right, moving on to item F, approval of expenditures in amount of five hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and nine cents. Susan Griffin?
I'll be glad to answer any questions, um, if you, that you may have on the, uh, but these are, um, the same invoices that you've seen that we present to you at the committee of the whole. Just, they're all combined together, um, in one, one place.
Sure.
And we include E F Ts and, um, A C Hs.
All right, so our larger items, of course, are the Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Also, the police pension property tax of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Um, those are our main items. Of course, we've all had time to look over the expenditures on the sheets. Um, any questions at all? Here are no questions, can I have a motion for approval of the expenditures of five hundred and ten thousand dollars? Five hundred and ten, ten, eight hundred and eighty-four thou- (laugh) five hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and nine cents.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, ratifications, we have none tonight. Um, reports, uh, committee of the whole reports, any tonight at all? Don't believe so. Um, the mayor's report, uh, if we could, we're gonna be swearing in our new administrator, Mark Rooney. Mark, could you step up?
I, Mark Rooney?
I, Mark Rooney.
Have been appointed to the position?
Have been appointed to the position?
Of village administrator?
Of village administrator.
Of the village of Round Lake Beach.
Of the village of Round Lake Beach.
Do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I?
Or affirm that I?
Will support the constitution?
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the constitution?
And the constitution.
Of the state of Illinois?
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of village administrator?
Of village administrator.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, took a while to get him here, but we're glad he's here, that's for sure. It's taken a lot of weight off my shoulders over the last, last couple of weeks. Um, so thank you very much, Mark. Um, second will be appointments of delegates for the I A, I A P D. Um, and that will be, where we go? Um, thank you. Sorry, my computer's slowing here. Um, Rich Hill is gonna be my alternate, and I will be the original delegate. Um, and we're, do we have to? That's just a motion, right? Uh, can I get a motion, please, for, uh, the delegates?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk, second by trustee Abara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Um, and third on the mayor's report tonight is a resolution honoring Denise, uh, on her retirement, uh, from Public Works. Uh, Scott, you wanna take that? And then we'll have her read the.
Yeah, so Denise is, um, has been with the village for forty-one years. Um, we're gonna hold a, um, small reception for next week. This is a resolution, um, just, um, highlighting her, uh, forty-one years of service, um, with the village and, um, and this will be presented at that, um, reception next week.
Wednesday, right?
That is Wednesday. Oh, sorry. Uh, between five-thirty and seven-thirty.
Thank you. All right, if we could, we'll have our clerk read the resolution.
For the village of Round Lake Bees- Beach, a resolution honoring Denise Schottenhaus for forty-one years of distinguished service with the village of Round Lake Beach. Whereas Denise Schottenhaus has served the village of Round Lake Beach with distinguished and outstanding service for over forty-one years. Whereas during her services with the village of Round Lake Beach, Denise Schottenhaus has also served as union president for local three forty-seven. Whereas Denise Schottenhaus has received a well-deserved employee excellence award from the village of Round Lake Beach. Whereas Denise Schottenhaus has dedicated her career to creating and maintaining a positive culture in the workplace with her knowledge and expertise in customer service, her trustworthiness, and her willingness to remain impartial and objective in all matters. Now, therefore, Mayor Scott Nichols, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, declare that Denise Schottenhaus is hereby honored for outstanding and dedicated service to the citizens of the village of Round Lake Beach, Lake County, Illinois, and extend the sincerest best wishes of all the residents of the village of Round Lake Beach, Illinois, for healthy and happy retirement.
All right, thank you very much. Um, before I get a motion, I will just say that, uh, in the almost nine years I've been out here, um, before I even was on the board, I had dealt with Denise and have heard numerous great things about her from our community. She's one of the first people, people call when there's an issue in our community. Um, and she always tends to find a way to make them happy, no matter how upset she's been about, they've been about something that's going on. And, uh, she gets it taken care of, and then Public Works takes care of the problem. So we wanna thank her very much. Um, so if we could, I have a motion, uh, to pass this resolution.
So moved.
So moved by trustee, um, Cleveland? Second? Second by trustee Davis. And, uh, can I have a, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion will carry. Um, on to business item A. Uh, resolution awarding contract to Integrated Lakes Management in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents for the Oak Savannah Clearing Project. Uh, Director Hiltz, uh, brief description?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this item was, um, discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting. Um, this item is, um, part of our, uh, wetland and natural areas, uh, program. Uh, this, this, um, the Oak Trees Savannah Project was identified, um, during the budget process, and, um, we did get three, um, proposals and the recommendations to award the, um, first phase to, um, I L M for twelve thousand, seven eighty-one fifty-six.
All right, thank you, Scott. Yeah, we all have to discuss this in the committee of the whole, um, and are, um, tonight here to verify that twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents for the Savannah Clearing Project. I have a motion, please. Motion by trustee Abara?
Okay.
Second by trustee Stout. Um, roll call vote?
Trustee Valades? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Moving on to ordinance approving the transfer of well number eight to the Lake County Public Works. Uh, Scott, again on yours?
Yes, this item was also discussed at several, uh, committee of the whole meetings. Um, well eight was, um, the last of the wells that we have not rehabbed. This well, um, needs extensive, uh, rehabilitation to get it back to, um, where we need it to be as far as our emergency wells. However, the last three years, we've, um, increased the capacity to well three, four, and five to, um, to adequately maintain our, uh, emergency well, um, water during, um, Java shutdown, so, um, making those upgrades, we were able to abandon this well for distribution. Uh, Lake County is just gonna use it for maintenance for the sanitary lagoon site and not be part of any potable water. Um, okay. And so we'll just have to pass an I G A, uh, with the village and then with the county.
All right. Um, if I could, now, just so we understand, all, we have done backup work to our other, to three other wells to increase the productivity, so getting rid of this well is not only, uh, um, because it's not needed, but also because of the fact that we have adequate supply on a backup.
That is correct. We increased the capacity to, um, to, uh,
exceed.
Eliminate, yeah, eliminate the hundred and eighty gallons per minute.
All right. Um, if I could get a motion to approve the transfer of well number eight then to Lake County Public Works? So moved by trustee Davis?
Second.
Second by trustee Husk? All in favor?
Aye.
And actually, that should be a, uh, a roll call vote, too, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Valades?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, the ayes have it as well. Moving on to business item C, a resolution approving a three-year contract with Centa's Uniform Services for garment and floor mat service. Scott, I believe you're last one tonight?
Yes, um, this item is a, um, item that we, um, go out for proposals every three years. Uh, it covers the uniforms for Public Works and, um, the floor mats for all our facilities. Uh, Centas was, um, when you get a proposal, they provided the best service based on the proposals that were received, and it was, again, um, discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting.
All right, thank you. And not only was this a favorable bid, but also we've used them in the past, so we know their services are, are good. All right. Uh, can I have a motion then to pass the resolution approving the three-year contract with Centus?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis. Um, actually, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Um, item D, a resolution approving the Elevate- Illinois Elevator Safety Program Agreement with O S F M. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. Um, as discussed in the committee of the whole meeting, this, uh, agreement is a continuation of services that the village has received from Thompson Elevator for, um, inspection of elevators within the village, so, um, we recommend it.
Thank you very much. This, again, as, as, uh, all this items, all this stuff was discussed in our committee of the whole. So can I have a motion to resolution approving the Illinois Elevator Safety Program Agreement with O S F M?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. And, uh, can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
All right, business item E, an ordinance granting certain variances in departures for the property at seven fifteen West Rollins Road. Kate, you wanna take the lead?
Uh, yes, I will be, um, setting up the screen here in just a moment, but as, um, discussed at the committee of the whole meeting last Monday, um, the board, um, the mayor and the board have reviewed the recommendation of the planning and zoning, um, commission, and, um, there were some requests that came out of that specifically, um, additional information related to the drainage of the dog runs in the rear of the building. Um, as indicated in the memo, um, there, uh, is significant compliance with other, um, aspects of the site, and, um, the applicant has sought, uh, variances for those, um, that they were not able to meet. So if you'll allow a pause, I will step up and set up the screen. They are here to do a brief presentation.
Please do, thank you.
Oh, he did? Okay.
Sorry, I'll step out of the way so you can project, and I'll listen for me over here.
Give me just one second, sorry. All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Chirag. Um, with me, I have, uh, Tushar here, and then we have Caitlin here as well. Um, so today, we're here to present, uh, brief information on the drainage of the dog runs, um, in the exterior, um, of the property, uh, which was questioned, um, at the meeting, uh, last week. So to begin with, um, you know, first and foremost, we do believe that drainage and aeration are gonna be the keys to having a safe turf for our pets. So therefore, uh, we are planning to order an antimicrobial technology turf, so we've got, we've actually brought that turf with us here. So it's known as Alpha Sand. So basically, in each of these, um, grasses, um, embedded in there, it's a, um, it's, it's elemental silver, and they don't basically coat it, but they make it while they're making the actual strand of the grass. So, um, silver, as you may know, um, it's safe for humans and dogs, and it's also an antimicrobial. Okay. Now, also, what we brought with us is a, is an underlayment that will go underneath the turf, which will raise the turf on the asphalt. Um, and I forgot to mention, the turf also has, um, um, holes at the bottom to allow leakage of the water or drainage of the water into the, um, Alpha Drain here. So, as you can see in that picture, the Alpha Drain, um, it creates a one-inch barrier between the asphalt and on the turf, and it allows a ninety-two percent air void. So this is gonna allow, um, the air and the water to circulate more easily, um, and also allowing proper drainage to prevent, um, odors and build up of bacteria and puddles. So there's some pretty, um, significant studies behind using air drains, um, underneath turf. A lot of sports arenas will actually use them. Um, so one of the interesting, um, statistics that we found was that it could rain over one hundred and seventy-one inches in an hour, uh, which probably never happens, and air drain could drain it on just a zero-point-five percent slope. Also, um, air drain can hold zero-point-five-seven-eighth gallons of a water per each square foot. Um, it needs until, um, the rest of the water can drain through the air drain. Um, so we put these numbers into practicality. Um, so an average hose, like a garden hose, will dispense about twelve to thirteen gallons of water per minute. So in order to reach a maximum capacity on the turf and the air drain, it would require two hoses to constantly pour twelve to thirteen gallons of water for a hundred and thirty-eight minutes, uh, consistently, without any drainage on the bottom. Um, our cleaning at the end of the day is probably gonna be roughly a ten-minute spray down with some chemical diluted with the, um, water there. Um, in the winter months, we're probably only gonna use dog run one, um, and not even use the dog runs two and three, which is gonna reduce the usage of the water um, and the need for drainage significantly as well. Um, so we actually did a little experiment, um, over the weekend, um, at that actual property, so I actually ran a hose there for ten minutes and, um, expelled about a hundred and thirty gallons of water, so you can take a look at how that looked, I hope. There it is, okay. This is taken in, like, slow-mo, and, um, just speed it up, so that you're not here, sitting here for ten minutes watching. So, at ten minutes, this is how far the water reached, uh, without any drainage. So it didn't even reach the residential in the back, and, um, after fifteen minutes, it was completely dry. So that's without any drainage, and most of the water just went into the cracks that was already in the asphalt, or evaporated. Um, however, um, I know that the Department of, um, or the Lake County Health Department is act, is, is asking for some kind of, um, subsurface, uh, drainage, so we do have some, um, plans and, um, and, um, in proposal here for the, um, for the drainage. So one of them is, um, having, um, four-inch floor drains in each of the dog runs, so we're looking at about installing ten floor drains in each, um, dog run underneath the air drain system. Um, each floor drain will be about six to eight inches deep underneath the asphalt, and it's gonna be, um, structured with PVC piping, um, ev- obviously after consulting Julie and, um, making sure that there's no lines underneath there. Um, so the water from the turf will drain into the air drain, and then after the air drain, the water will, um, um, go down into the, um, exit, the drains that we will be installing. So to put that into a little bit of a, uh, diagram there, so if you look at the asphalt here, so the turf is, so the turf is gonna be here, air drain will be here, there will be a hole drilled down in the asphalt, uh, which is about, usually asphalt's about two inches, so we'll drill down to two inches, and then about six to eight inches will be about, uh, gravel and then soil. So the PVC pipe will allow the water to exit into the soil, uh, when needed. Um, just a little bit of a more, um, realistic diagram with the PVC. Um, so the turf here, underlayment, again, of the air drain, then the water, you know, going down into the soil, um, from the PVC pipe. Um, in addition to the, to having the PVC pipe, we're gonna fill it with two B clean stone. Um, they're about three, three-fourths of an inch. Um, these are the, you know, the stones that are used, um, for drainage and filtration purposes. Um, a lot of the dog runs that we've been to and, you know, researched and, um, a lot, a lot of the dog run owners that we've talked to actually use this, um, method with great success over many years, and they never have any issues with flooding or runoff water, um, with contamination or odors or anything like that. So that's a very brief explanation of, um, how we're gonna provide proper drainage. Obviously, as you saw through the video, um, there's not much runoff, uh, within ten minutes or fifteen minutes, that water was already gone into the, uh, cracks and seeps there. Um, but if the, if the Department of Health is, is asking for it, you know, this is the most, um, realistic way that we can provide the drainage, uh, underneath the, um, turf and air drain. Thank you.
I think when I, when, um, when I had heard, with, saw what the county had said, I believe it was, um, they said a trench system. So when you're, when you're spraying the water and, and cleaning the, cleaning the astroturf off, that water's all running out towards the street or out back, 'cause that's the low areas, of course, right? So it's going back towards the neighbors. Are you doing a trenching system to keep that water from going out from underneath your astroturf into a trench? Or just gonna have the drains?
So, let me, let me answer that. So we actually looked into it, and, uh, we can make a trench, actually, just at the border.
Yeah.
We're leaving approximately fifteen feet of space between our fence, um, the turf and the next neighbor. So realistically, the water that goes down, and if it goes into these holes and everything, there's practically almost no water going all the way towards the end.
Mm-hmm.
So we can build a trench and just, you know, have a little trench at the end.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, practicality purposes, we were going to leave it off if there was any type of flooding, because we don't want the flooding either.
Mm-hmm.
In the future, we would build a trench if needed.
Yeah.
But right now, I don't know if it's really ne- we can put it. The question is not, but I thought, uh, keeping, you know, grass there, instead of putting a trench, would probably look better, and I think grass would be an excellent.
You could do the trench underneath the grass, too, though, right at the border, right? So it's covered by the grass, and then the rock is underneath the trench?
Oh, we can also do it that way.
That way, it's, that's why it's hidden. The only reason I'm saying is because now, when you're, if you just do the drains?
Yes.
Most of the water's going to run downhill, towards the street or towards the neighbor's house. It's not gonna go to the nearest hole unless you re-pitch the concrete and, or the brick, the blacktop and everything else. So, I would think if you border that kennel with a trench, yeah, it could be fifteen foot away from it, but then, where, where, yeah, that way it doesn't, when you spray it off every time, the neighbors don't say, oh, they're cleaning their kennels again, here it comes down the drain, you know, out onto the street.
We can also do that.
But I don't know what county is going to say is, is okay or not. I do think I read something about the trench system being okay. Um, but if you could, yeah.
So my understanding of, um, the engineer's review and the concern is, um, at least what was presented, um, last Thursday, I believe, was that, um, it appeared that the, the turf system would drain to a point discharge, um, that seems a little different in today's presentation. A point discharge, meaning there was a system underneath, um, this, that was, that was moving it to one discharge point, and then the concern was it entering, um, the, um, sanitary system, and, um, doing that, uh, in a way that, that met the standards. And so, um, uh, instead of a point discharge onto the street or, um, potential, you know, contamination into the sanitary system, I think that the trench system, as understood between the engineer and the county, um, was, uh, a way to, um, discharge this, uh, not so that it was dispersing, um, out into the roadways or, um,
So not to say what my, what I was giving you is the right way, but I think it's probably more appropriate than what yours is going into just a, just the po- hoping that it's gonna go into the round drains. Um, but I can't say that the engineers are gonna be okay with it either. Um, so I would say the, uh, and the best point would be to reconsider the trench side, the trench, trench all the way around it, rather than, I know you guys had, had looked into having it go into the, oh, not the same. oh, not the sanitary, but the...
It's going into the storm.
The storm. So going into the storm drain. And I know that was expensive. But if they, if they're saying the trench style is okay, I would say present it as the trench style all the way around it on the borders where it's covered by the astroturf. So as it's washing away, it'll go right in, but yet it's still all hidden. But then present that back to the engineer so they can have a little bit better understanding whether or not it will fit their needs. Because seeing it going down the driveway wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't make me happy, I don't think, or the neighbors. But if it's trenched, it's not going to go out there. But now my question is, is a trench just going into a gravel pit enough to make them happy? And I'm looking at them, but I know she's the one that would make the contact point, or you would, with engineering.
Yeah, so reading the engineer's notes, it's a infiltration trench. So based on that, the whole trench would be, have to meet a standard, and it would, this is not one gravel. So it would spread out over time before it goes into the storm sewer. They specifically said it can't go in the sanitary, which is correct because it is surface water, and sanitorially allows wastewater. But they do want to treat the infiltration trench, probably meets the standard that it would dilute any of the contaminants into our storm sewer. So again, this is not a final review of the engineering, and so it could take, after your engineer's presented to ours, and then we'd obviously have to get sign off from the county.
I think, so yeah, we officially, they officially, and our engineers, can't tell you how to do it? They want you to tell them how you're going to do it, and they'll say yes or no. Am I, is that?
That is correct with the standard.
So I would tell them, you need to base it off of what their suggestion was, and then go from, and go from there. Again, we do want to help you out and get you expedited as quickly as we can. That's why we said yes for tonight. Yeah, so our committee of the whole, again, is the second Monday of next month. So that would, I mean, yes, you can present it and get it to them quicker. So you have the, you know, engineers will give you the correct answer before our committee of the whole could be able to say yes. So, you know, we'll do our best to work with you to try to get, you know, approved quicker than later. But officially, officially, it would go committee of the whole, and then back on the third month, the third week of the month, back to us. But if you, if you speak to, speak to them and get all the engineering over and everything else, and if it's signed off by them, maybe we can discuss something we can do for you before then. I, yeah, the holiday would be a great month. I want to work with you, but if we don't get the engineering done and approved by the correct people, we'd be doing a disservice to everyone, including you.
You have a dog, we'll border for free.
That would get us even more trouble, so. But no, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. If you can, if you can get with, you get with your engineers and get the documents back over to them, we'll try our best to get you back on schedule if we can, okay?
Next week or so, we'll have it to the engineer.
Okay.
So it'll be done.
You guys have been working great with them so far.
I appreciate them doing that.
Yeah. Kate's been on top of it, that's for sure.
Exactly.
Anything else?
No, I noted the feedback from the board, and we will proceed ahead.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. That's great.
All right, so on this item, the ordinance granting the certain variance in departures for the property of 715 West Rollins Road, we're going to send this back. They're going to be working with, with planning and engineers, and we'll bring this back to the committee of the whole. Or if, if everything goes well, we'll do our best to get this on track. So we'll be, just, we don't have to have a motion on this at this point, right? So we'll just be passing on this item until next, the next, the next contact, okay? All right. At this point, then, we don't have anything else. It's open to public participation. Since you guys are the only ones here, if you have anything else to say, we'd be more glad to hear it. But if not, we are going to be going into executive session here. If I can get a roll call vote, please. For, we're going to be going into executive session for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, and executive session minutes and personnel. So if I could have a roll call vote, go into executive session.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Trustee Cleveland, motion. Trustee Abara, seconds. And roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, we will be going into executive session. We will be back out. You don't have to stay. So we appreciate you coming in tonight and hope to hear from you soon, all right? Thank you. Yeah. Scott, legally?
There's no legal requirement.
No, okay, so just shut it down. I can even lock up, I don't care about that, so you're good, too. Matter of fact...